With that, I'm going to go ahead and call us to order, noting it has been properly posted and our media representative notified. First item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. We have no revisions.
Salute.
Motion is made in seconded, question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next is community and staff participation.
We have a couple of staff that are presenting tonight. The first of those is Stephanie Urshin. She is on the screen in front of my face here. Stephanie is our Read 180 teacher. She transitioned from a classroom teacher into our new Read 180 program, which provides reading intervention services to 4th, 5th, and 6th graders at the middle school this year. So, welcome staff, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Hi, everyone. How are we?
Hi.
So, I am just super excited. They called out for me to share about Read 180. I did create a slide presentation. So, let me clear my speaker up fast. All right. Can everyone sit?
Yes.
All right. One, two, three. So, like I was saying, super excited to share. Kelly had mentioned I've taught upper grade for the past five years at Brooklyn, transitioned to this position this year, and I am in love. I am so excited to not only be working with my previous students, which has been so much fun, but also just to see the growth. Unfortunately, due to maternal and parental issues, I haven't get dressed until November. But even from November until March, the growth that I've seen has been fantastic. And it makes me really looking forward to the rest of the school year as well as next year. So, to kind of explain what Read 180 is, I want to welcome this room to 08. This is my classroom. It's in the 4th, 5th grade. But I do work as 6th grade as well, so they come down. As you can see, I have a lot of things posted. There's before then, both keywords, art learning target, as well as library devoted to each grade level. So, what is it? So, Read 180 is an intensive reading intervention program. And it's really going to be helping the students, not only the reading skills, but their writing and we do a bookwork with vocab. The other thing that's interesting about it is that it's a session for students who are no more than clear below grade level in reading. So, what I mean by that, right, it's a tier, tier two intervention. So, I'm working with those students that are just below grade level that need that extra support to get them put up. It's not a tier four, which is even more intensive. That's like what Ms. Sammy does, where it's a small group of a whole page. My group, I have 15. Sorry. Sorry, guys. So, my group is composed of 15. So, I have a normal group in front of me. But the awesome part about Read 180 is it's broken down into different rotations, which I was explaining a little bit. First, I just want to tell you about this book that I use. It's called the Reading Enthony. And what's about it is that it's given multiple times throughout the year, kind of like a math test, but it's strictly focusing on their, like, score. So, I give a score after they take it. And it's not only going to determine groups who I'm pulling with, it tells them what reading level they need to be reading during independent reading time. And it also is tracking that goal. So, the reading score, like, text score is one thing that I look at closely when we retake the task about the first of the year. And that's one of the data points I'm going to be looking at to see if they made enough growth, be able to graduate their program a lot. So, the program is very structured, which is nice, and it's broken down into different workshops. And each workshop, as you can see on the screen, will have both of, part of it, comprehension skills, like P I D and details. It's going to have a writing portion where we are switching between informative writing, argument writing, opinion, a wide variety that they're getting. And the quote people break it down so that they know all of the words needed to write whatever topic is about. It even has career portion as well as functional literacy. On the screen, I added two things that I have posted in my classroom. This is for 5th grade unit. The workshop is called Water Repeat. And so, it has a topic question where we are obviously reading all sorts of texts from photo essays, informational texts, even the work here, to answer this question by the end of the workshop. So, this one is talking about how we provide Earth's fresh water supply from drying up. So, it's nice because it is also making connections with different subjects. It's more science-based. And then below, I just put some of the vocab words. Before we read after the day, we go over at least two vocab words to really help them understand what we're going to be reading about. Earlier, I mentioned can be rotations. So, when I have a group of 15, we all start together as a whole group lesson. They are following along in their, it's a workbook, and it's also on my screen. So, we are doing that together because we're all participating, which I will say, the amount of participation has been wonderful. I don't know if it's just because it's a small group, if we feel comfortable with each other, but we're a whole crowd of students and how much they want to participate. And then after the whole group lesson, we transition into conclusions. Small group, whole kids with names, 5 kids are in completely reading at the board. That's what the last file allows for. And then 5 kids in application, which is the Read 180 website, which is also targeted to their specific level based on their last file score. Everything is targeted to where they're at, which will help to see that go through the whole. And then we'll add to grab questions. Here is our, their vocab book. So, you can see on the left-hand side, you have the book. They're talking about how we go over the parts, meaning and example. And these are the ones telling me the answers to all of those. We will read, usually have a P O D question that the kids are focusing on. We dig a little deeper into that skill of the P I D and details. And then sometimes build like a functional skill or grammar skill that we're working on too. And then here on the left-hand side, you will see we have an example of what that website looks like. So, they work through these different zones, once again, going through so many different firsts, reading, language fluency, writing, and then finding the success of taking all what they learned and cutting like one final bridge up for them. And on the right-hand side, you will see what independent reading looks like. eBooks, audiobook, bullet sticker back. Of course, they're having some pictures of students in action. So, from 1st to 5th, I have a student working in her car. In the middle, there's two kids on the student application website. They're at different points because they're in different, it's based on their last file bubble. And then on the right, you will see that students are reading independently, which they can sit around their own reflective seating for that. But as for the teachers' side of things, this program is great because it is telling me their progress every day. I can see how many minutes and what they're bringing in. Right away, I can see their grades on their quizzes, on tests, and it also tells me specific skills that a student needs to work on. So, that way, I can target that, that small group and get that stuff. And a quote, today a reader, tomorrow a leader. I wanted to end with that and if you have any questions.
How many, how many kids are in at one time in the classroom with you?
So, I have three groups, and each group, starting with 15 each. So, I have two groups that are combination of 4th and 5th graders and then one group of 6th grade. So, I work with a total of 45 students.
Do you feel 6th grade will be ready for, like, up at the 7th grade level when they start next year?
So, there, I think with me starting later in the year, you know, they weren't able to have that full year of intervention, but I am seeing a lot of growth. I think it would be beneficial to continue with them next year. How the program works is 3rd through 5th is one, and then through 8th is the other one. So, that same program, I could group, you know, the 6th graders or maybe some 7th graders that still need that support, and be able to group them together. It's more so, it doesn't matter as much about that grade level as it does like their own level based on the test that I give, if that makes sense. If I combine the grades, then it still will be fine. And right now, I'm completely pulling them for 90 minutes each. So, this program, it can be 45 minutes to 90 minutes seconds. And we decided to start with 90 minutes and kind of give them as much as we can give, you know, safely in our amputative moving. And so, I've got with that, you know, we've kind of been doing multiple things that I've been seeing already that I'm able to move well and some things that maybe we could switch up. And I have noticed that 90 minutes is too long for them to, you know, stay focused on that subject. And so, one of the things that I was recommending was to shorten that time a little bit so that when they're completing, they're able to focus that whole time. And that, and I would hope get more out of it if it's shortened because they're staying focused more.
Do they bounce from one thing to another? You had them on the computer, then they were reading. Is that something that they bounced throughout your, your time with them?
Yeah. So, I've been in touch with my Read 180 trainer. I meet with her every month or every other month. And that is one of the questions I asked was, is it best practice to have them between the rotations? Is it best practice for them to focus on one of those stations a day? And she said that schools do it both ways. So, I have done it both ways this year to kind of play around with it and see what I like. This, I'm in the rotation, it's 20 minutes each. And then if it's one for the rotation, it's going to be, you know, like a 40-minute second of them, like, Read 180 for the student application.
I would imagine for the kids that can't focus for as long, that would be easier to, to move from one thing to another and, and, you know, kind of.
Give their body movement.
Correct.
Yeah. And I definitely noticed with one kid with 20 minutes, it was smart for them to really get into their book or just in the big transition, the, the other reading log, and then bounce your read. It was almost like they were able to, you know, get a, get a good chapter in or get a good amount of pages in. So, that's why I wanted to play around with, okay, if I extend the time, are they going to be able to maintain that focus? Or, you know, is it going to be too much for them? And I would say that you can expect it, it's dependent on the kid.
Is it possible to do both in the same period? Or is that, is that make things too difficult?
I, and that's the key with do both and have, you know, like, two half and half. Some kids focuses on, you know, the whole, the whole time focusing on one speech. I personally not try that yet, but that definitely is something that I could give a try.
I just think that, you know, like, I know I learn differently than other people learn. So, finding that niche for each individual kid might be beneficial. I didn't, I didn't know if that was something you would try or you were in the process of doing.
Yeah. No, I love that idea. And, and it's nice too because even if I do support the, the listening or reading or the student application instead of the 320-minute rotation, that other 20 minutes will be needed with me. So, even, they're getting up at least once, or it's broken up to, you know, broken at least once because I would still be with those rotations. And then one other we, or discussing at next was, you know, maybe being able to chart some of our lower kids. And because we do not have intervention right now, we just have the tier two. And, you know, there is a pool guide of, you know, some kids that are just below grade level and maybe some kids, you know, further below. And so, one thing that we've been discussing is maybe, you know, pulling an extra group of my lowest of schools and doing, you know, more intensive, smaller group intervention for them just to create a, an extra group to help them get up a little bit more. Any other questions?
I'm done with my interrogation.
I think it's, you know, you can see one of the reasons that this is working so well is because Stephanie's a skilled, experienced teacher. And, you know, it's always nice then to have her input and her judgment and making those changes within the program that can really benefit our students. So, we appreciate her work.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our district hosted an early childhood party at the end of February. The early childhood party is kind of the fun way to get the child to find screening done. So, every district has a responsibility to participate in child find events to screen for developmental abilities in our community. So, we kind of make it fun. It's a little party for 18 months to 3 years old is, or 4 years old is kind of our target age. And since it's a party, we have a cupcake craft with candles that can kind of work on fight motor skills. Our occupational therapist worked, worked on that craft so she could kind of see the fight motor skills, just have to read differences and kind of see how the kiddos doing there. And then we also had our play kitchen out with cupcakes and a birthday fun play thing to kind of get into so that the kids would be, can plan their own party and kind of talk. And that gets the language skills and the social skills kind of rolling so we can spend time with these kiddos and see where they're at. And then, of course, we have the slides and trampoline and the obstacle course because those are fun and they also show us the gross motor skills. So, you know, if a kiddo's struggling with those skills, we can kind of see if that pops out then. And then while they're busy having fun, we have the parents fill out what's called an ASQ screener. This is just two examples of a question for a 3-year-old. They're pretty detailed. They come with little pictures and then the parents select yes sometimes or not yet. It's kind of a nice, easy way for parents to say, yeah, I'm seeing this or not quite yet, or no. And then it scores up really quickly for us. We, it counts by tens or fives, and then we get a nice score, and we can plot it on the chart. So, you can kind of see wherever the score lands, if they're in the black area, we're concerned. We might start a special education referral or for them to, or it's a 3 if they're not quite 3 yet so that they can get some early intervention services. It, you can't really tell, but it's like this light gray box area over here. Those are like the at-risk kiddos. We might suggest some things to the parents to work on or might say, hey, let's look at what the, what you answered no that they're not doing yet so that we can kind of see what skills we need to work on. And then there's the white area over here. They're over here, they're on track. And parents always like that reassurance that, yep, you're good to go. That's a, that's a solid area. And even individual feedback too. You know, you have a child score 60 in one area, maybe a 40 in another area. You can see those individual strengths and weaknesses, and we can kind of give them that personalized feedback. And our speech therapist is always busy there because parents are concerned about speech sounds. Speech development is a little wacky, and some sounds aren't normal to not have, and some sounds aren't normal to not have. So, it's always nice to have her input there too. And then one other benefit to having this event is also that we get to network with new families. This year, we have a new family that we got to network with and kind of connect with. And I always think that's really fun, a nice way to get them in the building, have a positive experience with the parent and the child in the classroom. So, yeah, that's, we really like to have those every year. We did only have three year, 3 kids this year show up, but we kind of moved to an appointment-based session to make parents more comfortable. And we also had it during the day. And when we're reflecting on the past years, we realized that evening time definitely got the most kids. So, next year, we're looking forward to having an evening time with a larger group of children because that's what their parents kind of prefer. So, and then we kind of get to see the kids interacting with each other too, which is important. Any questions about our early childhood party?
How did you, how did you advertise or get this out to families?
Yeah. So, we pushed it out on Facebook. It was in our newspaper as well. That goes up to the community.
Do you feel that there was, I know you said during the day, the timing, but do you also feel just because of the pandemic, it's lower this year?
Yeah. The past two years, it's been lower. The year before the pandemic was our highest attendance rate. So, I really do think that that slowed it down quite a bit. I do know that I had a parent reach out to me this year and ask if it was going to be like a group setting. So, I know, it seems like our community wants that setting. They want kids to be able to get together, have those interactions before school, so.
More like a preschool type setting?
Right.
Would that benefit you as well, seeing how they interact with other kids? Or is there?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, there's benefit to that.
You've done Little Mustangs playgroup in the past, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, we're, we're looking to start that up again. It was always, and parents really appreciated that program too. Even though it was during the school day, it still had a pretty good turnout for a free playgroup.
Kylie will be running the Little Mustangs playgroup during our summer school.
Kylie, we advertised for that during this too. For all the parents that were coming in, hey, we have summer just coming up.
And then you have like basically all 3-year-olds come or?
Actually, interestingly enough, we had mostly 2 and 1/2-year-olds, 2, 2 and 1/2-year-olds.
Which is good because they don't know where to start. So, they, if they needed something to know, like, here, this is where you need to start till you're this age, and a lot of parents don't know.
Right. And typically, if there is a concern before 3, then we refer to our counseling partners at first of 3. But, you know, I think it's a really good relationship-building step for parents, especially if it's your only child coming in or lead on.
Yes.
Yeah.
How long has something like this been around? I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit older, my kids are a little bit older, but I don't remember seeing anything like this. How long has this program or something like this been?
Well, I've been here five years, and we've been doing it every year since I've been here. I know districts in the area typically do similar, you know, events, parties, kind of things to screen for developmental abilities as well, so.
Pre-pandemic, your, your team had actually done a series of early childhood and it's kind of a season or theme throughout.
What were numbers, just out of curiosity, what were numbers pre-pandemic for your, your event?
So, our Child Find event was a little bit lower, probably around 10. But our early childhood nights, where it was just like a fun night of a theme, we had probably like 15 to 20.
Now, Kylie, Child Find is a little bit more targeted. Can you speak to that a little bit on what Child Find actually is?
Yeah. So, Child Find is really dedicated to showing or helping parents see if there's developmental ability. So, it's, it's really focusing on where are they compared to their peers. Versus our early childhood nights were more like, you know, let's do a find motor night where we're just going to focus on how to build your child's find motor skills. That's kind of the difference in those two events.
So, under Child Find, it really is a targeted population to, to help intervene early and often to hopefully close that gap before the gap really starts to go with academics or anything and some of those find motor, gross motor movements, speech, things like that. And sometimes parents don't have a barometer to really gauge off of. So, it's a great opportunity for that, and our team does a great job. I would imagine just coming out of pandemic, they have even less of an idea of what's going on.
Yeah. Well, I think before, you'd go to the doctor. Your doctors would help a lot. It's hard to get into the doctors now for these types of things. Or just annual checkups where they would go over them instead. So, they have those, this available for them instead.
Right.
Even though your number was 10, that's a lot more than 3, so.
Yes. Yeah.
It's very, very interesting.
Yeah.
And do we have any community participation? All right. We will move on then. First, on our consent agenda, we need approval of the minutes of our regular session of February 21st, our special meeting of March 8th, and our work session of March 16th. Motion made in seconded, is there question or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, approval of our monthly financial reports?
Salute.
Yeah. Yeah. We have them in the second. Was that?
I still moved, sorry.
Was there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, question or discussion on any individual parts? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the remainder of the consent agenda?
Salute. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Question or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, item three is our new business, first being that of personnel.
Two items under personnel. The first item is to approve the retirement of 4K teacher Louise Zissler.
Second? I thought you were going to do it, so I stopped.
Motion is made and seconded to approve that retirement. I would say with regret. She's been with us for a long time.
At least as long as I think.
There you go. So, motion made and seconded, is there question or discussion?
Congratulations, there.
Yes. Yes. Question or best?
We will, we'll honor Louise as a retiree at our recognition lunch at the end of the school year.
Excellent. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Other item?
The second one is to approve the resignation of elementary school secretary Jamie Wiesniewski. Jamie took a job at Gateway.
Salute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there question or discussion? Yes. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is our 2223 staffing plan.
So, the 2223 staffing plan is a tax year board packet. We are up a total of three positions. Two of those are covered with Essar, and one of them is at the middle school due to a, it's just an addition with the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, which may or may not be there permanently depending on how we can rearrange the schedule.
Entertain a motion then to approve our 2223 staffing plan?
Salute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there question or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is our CISA 2 contract for 2223.
This is the annual approval of CISA 2. We get some of our special education services through CISA as well as we're members of their professional resource library. That in itself allows us to preview all sorts of educational materials that are on site here and try them out before we purchase.
I'll make a motion to approve the CISA 2 contract?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there question or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is our cooperative agreement with Willmont Union High School for Occupational. Next item is our cooperative agreement with Wilmot Union High School for occupational therapists.
So, we share our occupational therapist, Stacy Sibelski, with Union, with Wilmot Union High School. Right now, it's a sixty-fourty split, or it was this year. We're going to change it to a seventy-thirty split, or around seventy. We have a couple more kids and they have a couple less, so.
Convenient.
Yes, yes. It's always nice when they work in tandem, right?
Salute. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there question or discussion on that one? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next is staff COVID days for 21-22.
So, I know one of the things that the board wanted to look at as we are nearing the end of the year is the number of days taken for COVID-related illness. So, might be quarantine time, might be actual positive cases. So, we, twenty-nine staff that took days, a total of one hundred and seventy-five point seven-five days. Of those one hundred and seventy-five days, only forty-one of them were unpaid. What I would recommend is that we restore up to ten days per person on the May thirtieth payroll. That would be a total cost of only seven thousand dollars to cover. Because of those one hundred and seventy-five days, only forty of one of them were unpaid.
Anyone understand what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertain a motion then to approve that plan?
Salute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there question or discussion?
I would just like to throw in that the reason there's only forty-one unpaid days is that we have been, we're so fortunate for such a long time. We have staff that doesn't take their days. We've got a lot of staff and a lot of days, so we benefit from their good attendance.
Any other question or comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is our spring maintenance projects.
Okay, so while Bill gets himself beamed up to the screen, Nicole and I have done some work on our budget. And we have four areas where we have some pretty significant savings. Forty-two thousand dollars for a maintenance project that we did last year instead of this year. Fifty-seven thousand dollar savings because we couldn't fill our library media position for the second half of the year. We had an overage and benefits for our reading specialist of forty thousand. And then our Title II funds for professional development were still underused this year by twenty thousand, just because we still have a whole lot of travel and onsite workshops. So, that's a total of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. It's of our benefit to spend that money because if we don't spend it, it impedes future budgets for us and impacts our aid as well. So, we always, I think, have things in kind of the ready for times like this when we have these opportunities. So, one of the things the board had asked is that Bill put some numbers together for some carpet. So, I was going to talk about that, as well as zero turn.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'll start with the zero turn. So, this is the original purchase order for what our mowing equipment is now. So, you can see the date, three fifteen, two thousand, so it's going on, it's, excuse me, twenty-third season. So, with that, it's a good machine, but fatigue has started to show in. You can see it in the deck. I've made multiple repairs on the deck, welding. And it's structurally showing its age. So, you know, so what we're looking at doing, I've put together some pricing and... So, I kind of went through and I got some different examples of different brands, different pricing. Right here, we have the Grasshoppers. It's a three-cylinder Kubota diesel, and it will be ordered if approved with a seventy-two-inch deck. That's currently what we have. If we move to the next one, this is another zero turn. And there again, it's seventy-two-inch deck, because I deal with mowing about twelve acres right now. So, as you can see, different prices. This is what we currently had back in two thousand. This is what it would cost to replace it now, twenty-five thousand, three forty-five. And then we go to a diesel zero turn, and that's twenty thousand. And then, the front mount is thirty thousand, almost thirty-one thousand. And then we go to a different brand, Skay, which is another popular brand. And from there, they list, you can see about twenty-four thousand. And all of these come with three-cylinder diesels, the Kubota. Diesel engines are known for their longevity, you know, their power, their torque, and all that. I mean, you can tell by the John Deere that we have now, twenty-three years, we've got all that. So, so diesels are kind of the way I would recommend going, just for that reason.
Can I ask, what's the warranty on them?
Usually you get, they're different. You can get a couple of year warranties, and then you can buy extended year warranties. But most often, you know, you start with a good machine, and usually, I mean, there's always breaking on every machine, but...
So, can you talk a little bit about why we're looking at potential zero turn as opposed to a tractor?
Okay, I'll head that direction right now. So, zero turn, right now, currently takes us about twelve hours to mow everything. And that's trimming, push mowing, trimming, you know, under trees, everything. Zero turn would probably cut that almost in half. You know, the John Deere, you're turning, and then you have to, you know, either do rounds or, you know, where the zero turn's a lot quicker. Another advantage of the zero turn, the motor's behind you. So, you don't have all that heat going on you in this ninety-degree summer days, so. Operator comfort. So, I went on and compared, and I talked to some people. I have some friends that are in the landscaping business. Couple I talked to in particular, they said Grasshopper's a really quality machine. That's what they run. So, I got a couple quotes. This is from Brian Davis. He works at Johnson Tractor in Janesville. I happen to know Brian personally. He was a few years ahead of me in high school. He's been doing this for thirty years. Johnson Tractor's been a business longer than I've been alive, so. They have a pretty good reputation. Brian has a really good reputation for, you know, not only the sale, but the service afterward. So, so as you can see, this is a diesel, three-cylinder diesel with a seventy-two-inch. And I chose to have him quote a rear discharge deck, just for the safety factor. You know, last year at Silver Lake, we all heard about the incident there. So, now this mower will discharge out the back. You know, you can get closer to items that, you know, when you're mowing around. But safety was my biggest factor. So, as you can see, list price was twenty-two, two-eight-five. You know, and Brian was able to come up with a twenty percent discount for me. So, his final price was seventeen thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. My next quote is from Highway C Services over in Kenosha there, towards Kenosha. And same mower, same deck, same options, same listo. He was able to come up with eighteen-nine, forty-two. Then he has great setup, so now we're looking at nineteen-three, eight-seven. So, Brian's fifteen hundred dollars less. Brian has it in stock, ready to go. This Paul I spoke to said, could be September, could be October, so. So, you know, my recommendation, my recommendation's Brian, just because I know Brian, and the price is better, and I know his service, you know. He lives in Dearham where my parents do. I always use truck with a trailer behind it, so. So, I hear nothing but good things about Brian, so. So, that's kind of my recommendation, as far as that goes. Is there any questions about mowers, or?
Guys may pull out a little sketchy side. I agree with you on the zero turn. Obviously, that's going to be a huge... All you need to know about that is to look at any landscape companies that are all run with zero turns, so.
And another great feature about the front mount, that deck will raise up ninety degrees, get rid of the blades versus, you know, seventy-two-inch deck is not like, I pull it off at this one all the time. You know, it's all you can handle, the kid who loves to take the blades off and stuff, so. Definitely a safety factor for me there. All the cards and plates come right off, so you can get that stuff to service. So, this is what kind of led me to Grasshoppers, just their ease of maintenance, so.
Is there a service plan with these at all, Bill?
You can buy one. I mean, I'll talk to, you know, people, but I think they might have like a year service plan, and then after that, most companies are like that.
And this gives us redundancy, you know, right, for that end?
So, the nice thing is, the tractor, it's still a decent machine. So, now we have a backup to the mower and a backup to the snowplow, which is on a skid steer. So, there's that redundancy. We talk, oh, we do it with boilers, we do it with water heaters. And another, and I did talk, think about other things like quoting out prices for contracts and stuff. And I know a few years ago, it was like seven hundred and seventy dollars for one mower. So, now you start adding that up, and it's like, that turns into some big money.
I thought you were having this tractor, this thing would be paid off several times.
Well, yeah, and the nice thing about having your own mower is you're not mowing whenever they show up. So, if kids are out and about, I can jump to different areas. I can time my mowing, you know, so that, you know, I'm not around the kids. So, with that, we will be jumping over to carpeting, if there's no more questions about that. Did we want to separate it, or do it together, or how did you?
Carpet first.
Yeah. Listen carpet, okay. So, what we're thinking of doing, I guess I'll go with some pictures so I can show you. Here at the elementary, we're thinking of redoing some carpeting in really high-traffic areas with that walk-off that we have up here. It's a fantastic product. I mean, the wear, the way it cleans, I mean, it really does a great job. So, what we're looking at is, this is the entrance, here's the office. So, we're looking at this corridor here, and that'll trap a lot of the salt dirt that comes in on shoes. And it cleans really well. I mean, you can clean it with water. That's kind of the technology they have nowadays. And then another area is our main entrance coming into the multipurpose room. We're looking at doing three hundred and forty-five square feet right here. Protect the floor in the multipurpose room. And over here, we're looking at doing from the vestibule on in, all the way to the double doors past the multipurpose room. And the reason we chose that area is coming in and out of receiving and stuff, the milkman, and everybody else comes in with their dirty carts and bringing snow, dirt, whatever. You can see the wear right through here, and, you know, under the drinking fountains, you know, kids are always splashing water. So, we're looking for a product that, you know, kind of hides that, plus maintains that wearability, so. And then over here is the staff entrance, same thing. They come in with salt from winter and dirt from, you know, spring and water. And you can see the wear through here. This would, you know, help clean up to keep this area clean. So, so that's what we're looking at at the middle, or elementary school. Now, I'll go back and show you some pricing. So, he did it in two proposals. And I'll show you the middle school area in a minute. But the elementary, we're looking at for all four areas, thirty-four thousand, one-seventy-one. Most of the, you know, these numbers are pretty much the same as what we've done in the past with this area out here and down there. Unfortunately, you know, product goes up, and now you're paying freight costs to get it here. So, that's basically, you know, the big fault of it, is getting it here and buying the product. And you can see the hours they broke down, so. Down there, they demoed the floor sixteen hours, twenty-four hours to prep and get the floor ready for the new carpeting, and then carpet the actual installation and base work. So, while I have the middle school up, that area would be right out here on our way in. And I'll show you a picture. So, this is the area we're looking at for the walk-off carpet right here. So, we continue down to the double doors. There again, slips and falls with the BCT is common in the wintertime. Kids come in, their feet start warming up, and snow melts. So, safety's a big issue, and wearability and cleaning, because every year we wax this floor, that would eliminate that cost. And then the other proposal I have is for the library. So, we've all seen the library in the summertime, and it turns into, you know, a roller coaster in here. So, the floor, the floor has definitely seen better days, the adhesive's seen better days. So, the proposal for the library is right here. And that would be this whole area. And they've deducted for upgrades on what we use. So, there were two different types of carpeting, and they matched the lower-priced carpeting. And, you know, we would get the nicer carpeting for the same price as the lower three. So, there again, hours are broken down. You can see twenty hours for demo and, you know, getting rid of the broad and carpeting. Eight hours of floor prep and fifteen thousand, one-eighty-one for our put tile and base work and the product. So, then we also looked at pods seven, eight. Rooms one-twenty-four and one-thirty-one to one-thirty-three. And the number would be sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred. There again, they have the hours and the cost broken down. And I'll show you the picture right there. So, that would be six rooms in the seven, eight wing, and here's the library.
That would be the same carpet going in the library, then?
It wouldn't be walk-off, it'd be more of a designer carpet.
Right. Same thing is going to the library as in the classrooms?
Correct. I do have samples. I don't have a picture with me, but if you're interested in samples.
We met with the rep last year, I think, because all the middle school carpet, as we all know, needs to be replaced. It's just a matter of kind of phasing it in in a way that's all cost-effective and appropriate.
The issue we have here with the library, with the roller coasters, you call it, is that moisture-related because it happens in the summer?
Yeah, well, what happens is, everything moves with, you know, heat and cold, and, you know, moisture and dry, so everything's moving. And the adhesive is just simply worn out, so, you know, you'll see some spots as it gets wet, or it doesn't hold it down like it should, just because of age and wear, and maybe the product failed, as far as the adhesive.
When I first started as superintendent, we actually worked with Cullen, who, that was how many years after this carpet was in, and they found somebody, yeah, to come in and re-glue everything, this team from Georgia came up, yes. Ironically, we had the same issue with this carpet at downtown as well. So, you know, we thought, oh, is it the, I don't know, underneath the stuff?
And I mean, we try to keep the building pretty constant for as far, you know, when the, you know, summertime will run and the children, and wintertime we're heating. But in the wintertime, it does get pretty dry, so I'm sure, you know, holes are tight. And then, you know, in the summer, humidity levels go up.
Well, this is right off the management, so those doors are opening and the heat is coming in.
Yeah, and that's another thing. You can't control this, how wide open, you know. So, and another great feature of carpet tile, individual tiles. So, now you have all this room around every tile for expansion versus one big sheet across the whole surface. So, you won't see that roller coaster as much because, you know, there's room to move and, you know. So, that's a huge benefit of carpet tile. Plus, say you come in here with your tomato juice, and poof, on the carpet tile. Peel it right up, put a new one down if you can't get the stain out.
Is this a local company?
They're on the Monopoly Falls, but we've used them. And we've gone local before and haven't had quite the local enough.
I was thinking, you know, while you were talking about Georgia, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, when we first... Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we, when we first put them all together and took bids and quotes, I mean, I ended up with a company out of, through CISA purchasing out of Minnesota. And they came in here and, you know, obviously they couldn't compete cause they had to come down here and revitalize and. And, and Lippard, there again, I go back to my Cullen days, they're in a lot of schools. They do great work. The guy, I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of them. And, uh, I just really enjoy working with them and the quality they put down is, you know, right there. So.
So you were keeping track of Bill's map. Um, the zero turn eighteen, the library carpet eighteen, the walk-off at the middle school's twenty. Elementary walk-up thirty-five, seven, eight wing was on sixth classroom sixty-seven, so one fifty-eight. The number we want to stay below was one fifty-nine.
Well, squeezed it in there, Bill.
Well, that's why I put seven, eight up there is cause it's like, well, if we're gonna make this happen, we might as well be pushing, pushing the upgrades forward and making, you know, most use of our ability.
And in your opinion, Bill, this is the best use of, of the money that we have to update the buildings?
Right. Right now, our HVAC system is dialed in. Uh, I have a great relationship with Borre Pagel. And, you know, we've been, every year we, we take, you know, I have a plan as far as like this pump we should be looking at. And I work closely with Eric and he's like, maybe you should start looking at this. So I mean, we've, we've really brought that HVAC system from when I started to, you know, it's, it's a well-oiled machine right now. And yeah, in the future, there's gonna be changes, but I mean, right now we have it where we feel very comfortable with it. Uh, we just did water softening, as you know, we've done water heaters. So I mean, I, I feel it's time to start, yeah, we've done lighting. So I mean, I, I just feel, yeah, it's, you know, besides zero turn carpetings are a big need in the buildings as far as if we wanna keep pushing forward.
I just, I wanna make sure that, I mean, we never know when this situation will happen again where we'll have the extra money to, to spend on something. So I wanna make sure that we're spending it in the right places.
Well, I mean, the carpeting starts with the age and, you know, that, and that's my whole goal is to keep pushing. So we don't end up with, you know, everything coming out of some wars.
Well, and I, I don't know if you guys remember, this is part of the ten-year maintenance plan that we had talked about last year. And these things are on that. So they're doing a really good job with their analysis of, you know, what the priority is.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure. I, I trust your plan. I trust what you're telling me. I just wanna make sure if we're gonna spend it and we have it, let's make sure it's put in the right places.
And, and there again, it's, you know, kinda where I, you know, both buildings are being looked at. But, you know, we've done a lot of roofing work in the past. So I mean, it's, it's just, buildings take maintenance and every year you're gonna have to, you know, upgrade this or fix that and, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want this input back to yours or?
Thanks, Tim.
Then I will entertain a motion to proceed with the spring maintenance project as listed. Motion made and seconded. Further question or discussion? Adjustment of the overall plan, leave something out, change it.
When would you be starting, like the carpet thing, like right up and pull that out?
So, uh, yeah. Uh, so I've been talking to my rep and, uh, lead times right now are four, six weeks. So we, right now we're looking at plenty of time to get the product here and we wanna have this stuff by the end of June, so.
There are, I mean, being in the trades business here, I know that sometimes you start working with someone and all of a sudden there's a, well, we have a change order, we have a change order. So, you know, just wanna make sure we don't run into that. We're, we're bumping up against budget here, so.
Well, that's.
Bill and I had that coming.
We've had that conversation, yeah. So I, I've talked to my rep and I'm like, this has to happen. That's, you know, if we order this now, what are your lead times?
Right.
And he's talked to his supplier and so.
You know, fuel surcharges and we don't know where those are going. All those change.
Well, I recognize today and you said everything keeps coming up and all that seems like.
I think that's one of the advantages too, Bill and I were talking about, the advantages of having partnerships with vendors. And not that you always have to go with the same owner, not that you don't get quotes from different places sometimes. But when you have a relationship, it's a lot harder for them to say six weeks when they really need ten. And when Bill says, I, I need to be definite on this date, um, then.
I mean, things can change, but no, having a relationship with someone, that's crucial. I mean, if someone that you trust, someone that's done right by you.
Well, yeah, he's done the past work and that's another reason too, there would be a continuation of. So it's like, yeah, that, that's why I feel better, best.
It doesn't hurt to keep him honest and.
Oh, no, 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 we, we. Yeah.
That, that way you can come back and say, well, we got this number here and so, but yeah, no, that's, I'll wait.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. There's been made and seconded. Is there further question or discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next then, we're on to item four, first being principals' reports.
Okay. Um, couple of things, um, to share here. Um, I've had several conversations with, with families coming in and I just wanna highlight those for everybody. Um, I had a conversation with a parent who was concerned about safety, um, on, on the roads and everything out there. We had conversations and I spoke with Geno City PD as well with the parent. You'll notice the little green, yellow, high-vis people will be out there, um, in the crosswalks and everything. Um, our folks do a great job with, uh, the crosswalks and getting people, the students here safe. But one of the concerns was middle school students being dropped off that live down there crossing the road, uh, in front of the elementary. And just, uh, just the, the overall safety as kids are driving, they're concerned on Freeman Street there, on that traffic that is there. So having those conversations, having the, the police department really say, we're gonna get out there and, and take a look at that and, and have a presence there. Um, also doing what we can to increase the, the high-vis to get people to slow down and, and really be active there in, in keeping kids safe. Um, another conversation that came in was, um, with our St. Patty's Day that came up. Um, I had an open enrollment family that found me and, and had said that it's just, it's such a great environment in the building and the kids. The excitement that has gone up, um, just being involved in, in the different things. We're talking about that social, emotional aspect being so important and I'm really getting a lot of feedback on that. That, uh, it, it, just the fun things that are still tied to the academics. Um, yes, gold glitter throughout the whole building, um, it's not necessarily directly tied, but any children, any families, um, you, you're probably still picking that out, but, uh, one. One shout out there is, um, some people said that it, it's just a, uh, a custodian's nightmare. And, but Steve goes absolutely not, seeing, Steve Chris, he said, seeing the enjoyment and the excitement that kids face was well worth it. And he goes, it'll slowly be cleaned up because he said he knows he took about a jar home on his shoes. Um, so it, it, it will come out and as we're talking about new carpeting and everything. But just those little things go a long way to get kids excited to come to school and, and really open that up. I've been hearing that. Another, um, parent that reached out, we have a new, um, family that's moving in and they haven't started yet, but on their way in. They called about different resources and, um, the, the staff has been very responsive to that. And one particular was April Pittson, giving some of those, uh, community resources, county resources to a family that's really coming in. And she came back and was just kinda floored by it. So saying the partnership with the community and the, and the family. So just very, a, a great feeling and receiving those feedbacks, if it's concerns, if it's praise, whatever it is, coming back in there, um, i- is really nice. A last example that I'll give there is, um, Mrs. Brennick, as she has finished up her Healthy Heart Challenge. It's always a great event, you know, the school that raised, uh, with, with the families here raising over twenty thousand dollars for American Heart Association. But when I go in to the classroom this week and I'm seeing her build on that with gross motor and cardiovascular and using all of those terms with kids, it's not just the novelty of the event that gets everybody excited to it. She tailors it and, and really layers it into her instruction. And I think that's the art of what she does and, um, I, I couldn't be more pleased with her. And a lot of our professionals that are taking the opportunity to do fun events and bringing it back. Uh, our third grade did a, um, market day where they talked about a business plan. They had parents that signed off on their business plans for the students because they were going to help support them. So what are they going to do for that? Well, you're a silent partner. What are you getting out of it? Maybe some dishes, maybe things like that that get the kids on the hook for that. Um, so then bringing it all together and really looking at what a budget looks like if you're going to do this. How are you gonna market your product? And these are their graders and they had a, a, a great time with it. A lot of energy and excitement, but it really does connect to either the social space curriculum, the FIA curriculum. So they're not novelty things that are just for fun. There's that academic component to it and the more you can, can, can mask that and just make it fun, the more the buy-in. And, um, we're really feeling that as school starts opening up, there's more things within our building at night. Um, and Mrs. Brennick's bringing a, a running club that will be coming up. Just a lot of those things make, make a big, big difference. And I'm hearing that and the open, uh, communication. So just wanted to share those different little things. I know there's a, a shotgun, uh, there about it with, with different aspects and not necessarily pinpointed. But overall, that's the feeling right now at the elementary.
I liked your leprechaun picture, by the way.
Thank you. They found me. And by the way, I had nothing to do with that until the end of the day. Um, yes, the, the teachers kinda set me up on that one. And so I just rolled with it and, uh, I had to borrow the beard and the hat for the end of the day. And I promised a couple of staff that I would not do that until after three o'clock. Because, um, it, I said the connection to academics, that shut down academics pretty quick. So I had to make sure it was held off till the end of the day, uh, but set the kids out on a high note and it was a lot of fun.
So what you're trying to tell us, Luke, is your shenanigans at the elementary, we need a carpet?
For a brave no shit shenanigans, yes.
And the blue. Awesome. Um, this is a month of celebrations for us at BMS. We, um, our kids are just rocking it with everything. So I'd like to kinda share with you a little bit more about that, um, some we've probably already heard. Uh, we wrapped up both of our girls and boys' volleyball seasons and our girls took third in the conference this year. I was able to go to their, um, final two games that they had played, the semifinal and the final. They played their hearts out. Uh, they came back to win, um, the last game to, to clinch that third place. And it was just really great to see all the excitement, um, especially, you know, we did like a send-off for them where the whole school lined the hallways, you know, and they're screaming, cheering for each other. And Luke is right, like that is the stuff that makes school fun. And, and like feel like a, like a community and a place you wanna be. So it was really, really cool to, to see and I was really proud of the girls. Um, we also had, um, our WSMA solo ensemble earlier this month. And one of our students, Miles Derrickson, um, received a one for his guitar solo and will be going to state to, um, perform with his guitar, which is so exciting. I keep trying to coerce him into doing it over the PA for us and I'm feeling we're, we're getting there, like it's getting closer, but we'll see. So that's very exciting. Um, Willy Wonka, of course, is in full swing. I cannot wait to see what the show is gonna be. The kids are so excited. And what's really special to see is like the little kids working with the big kids, um, and kind of looking up to them as well. So it's, it's, it's a great way to intermingle all the great levels, um, and I cannot wait to see this performance. I'm super excited. Um, I attended a couple of trainings this past month, one of which was the Hope Squad training. And I know Kelly, um, we kinda take teams. She went to the first half, I went to the last half. Um, but what Hope Squad is, is it's a student-to-student mental health support program. Um, where really students are, the whole idea is to, um, combat teen suicide and pre-teen suicide. And, um, in some of our, our data that we did here, we found, um, based on our youth risk assessment, that students are two times more likely to tell another student that they're having, you know, depressing feelings or, you know, feelings of helplessness than they will an adult. And so the whole point of this program is to equip students to be able to handle and manage those conversations in a way that is effective and then also to, um, support them in knowing when it's time to pass that information along to a trusted adult. So, um, it was a really awesome training. It's something we're looking to roll out next year here. There's still a lot of questions as to what it's gonna look like in this building. But I think, um, you know, with our, our students, our growing mental health needs, this is something that is necessary. And, you know, it also goes with our mission of empowering our kids to take on that leadership role and support each other. So I'm sure we'll have more information on that later as well. And, oh boy, um, yeah, another busy week for us this week too. We got our band and choir concert this Thursday. Looking forward to that. And then of course, um, spring break and on spring break, Merrick, our, um, finalist who went on to the spelling bee at CISA two and qualified for the state bee. Um, he will be participating in the state bee over February then as well. So cross your fingers for Merrick. He's been studying and a list that I pull out every now and then.
I think that's the first one we've had at the state.
Is it?
Yeah.
He's super pumped up and I think he's really taken it seriously with like his prep work. I subbed, um, personal wellness class the other day and they were shooting hoops or whatever. And I'm like, I gave him like a word to spell, like, okay, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna rebound for you, but you gotta spell this first. And he did, oh, like, okay, take the ball. But he's, he's really into it and his friends are helping him practice too. So it's, you know, hats off to him. I hope that he has a great experience no matter what the outcome. So our kids are doing great things here.
So instead of playing pig, you played anti-disestablishment. Long game, long game.
Yes. You're, you're just lit about the carpeting thing.
You spelled that.
Yes, yes.
What's wrong?
He can spell pig though.
I don't have a formal report tonight, but I did wanna give you guys a reminder. If you have any expense reimbursements from going to conferences or travel or anything, get those, please get those over to us pretty soon so we can get those processed before the end of the year. I have just a handful of things. Um, we'll be pushing out our summer school course booklet either this week or right after spring break. We have over thirty classes that'll be happening in June. So I'm super excited to see, um, to see our signups with that. Doing kind of a combination of what we had done in the past and what we did last year. If you remember last year, that those June classes were kind of all over the schedule. We really gave our teachers a lot of leeway in, in scheduling and we kept with that idea. But this year we're just being a little bit more intentional to partner some of those classes. So those parents that are really looking for an all-morning program can have an all-morning program by choosing a good class combination. Um, we're gonna have the, uh, we have a getting ready for kindergarten, just called Bubbles and Ice Cream and something. Like, we were talking about it today. It's really engaging, getting ready for kindergarten class. That one and the Little Mustangs will be held down at the elementary school and the rest of the classes will be in this building. Um, so that'll, that's coming up. Um, our family engagement team, this is the, kind of their week of doing the Read Across America, all the dress-up days. Um, we took the board's idea about Brooklyn Blues. All of our kids got a blue shirt today. So they, everybody could be in their Brooklyn Blues today. Um, this week we also have our second referendum night tomorrow night. Um, at our first one, we had about ten to twelve people online and three in person. Um, had some really good questions from a, a, a couple that was here, uh, that don't have kids in the district yet that, that read about it in the Geno City newspaper, another plug for the newspaper. Um, and had come over and, and really asked you some good questions. Obviously a lot of questions always about taxes and tax impact and how that really works and, you know, what happens after three years. Um, so we'll look to see if there's any questions tomorrow or if it's the same.
That was the iPad over there.
Yeah, me too. That's what I thought. And so hopefully we'll get another handful of calls. Not hearing really anything from anybody. So, um, hopefully that's, that's good.
Get them up.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Um, and then our BFO is gonna be hosting a school board candidate Q and A session on Wednesday at six. Uh, both the referendum night and the, the school board candidate, um, event will be live streamed. So, um, they're gonna have the prospective candidates do a statement and do some, um, questions. And that way everybody can hear the answers. And I believe that, um, our Lake Chaiman news reporter is gonna do a question about that as, or a story about the different candidates as well. Um, if you hadn't had, haven't had a chance to read his referendum article, I thought he did a phenomenal job. Um, which he pulled from a luncheon that was a small group that he, you know, held with the nine school people and. Which he pulled from a luncheon that was a small group. He, you know, held it on the school people. And just did a, a really comprehensive reporting about the referendum, but also just about some referendum facts in general. Like he'd really done his homework for that. So he's a new reporter to our area. We are lucky, I think, to have, but he's not new to the field. So you can hear that in his writing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything from board members?
I will be taking work for the team, for the board and for Kelly, doing pie in the face on Friday for the Hard Challenge.
I'd like to attend that.
Probably more than once.
Hold off on sweets. I have six pies coming on Friday, so.
Yeah, I might eat half of them.
All right, anything else? All right then, our next regular meeting will be April eighteenth at six P M. here in this room. And we have a work session also scheduled for April thirteenth. And we do have to also post our focus group on the twenty-fourth. We have a focus group from five to six for the board.
I will be.
And the community is six to seven, or six fifteen to seven, right?
Not March.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, what was the first work session was?
Work session is April thirteenth?
Yeah, we'll be out at ten.
Okay. But you'll be, you're, you're going to be here for the.
I'll be here for the board meeting.
On Thursday.
The focus group on Thursday as well, tomorrow?
Thursday.
Today's Monday.
Yes, sorry.
Twenty-fourth.
Yes, I will be here.
Okay. Wait. But the focus group for the board is the twenty-fourth of April or March?
March. Okay, March. All right, any items for future agendas that want, anyone wants placed on the agenda next month, et cetera? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.